We like to do that down.
Hold order. Regular meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for January 14. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got CPR here.
We just gotta use it, 'cause it's gonna have to be warm.
We've got before us the agenda for this evening. Is there, or are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads?
I think the agenda's hot enough.
Okay, the agenda, the agenda will stand as presented. As far as just for still excused absences, Mrs. Campbell is out. We're gonna go to election of officers. And actually, this is just formality. I believe it was already, yeah. For the record, Mr. Geovasis had nominated myself as president this year, second of past. And then I had nominated Mr. Geovasis as vice president for this year, second of past. So there's no other points to that. We are gonna roll into our beginning of year resolutions, just for general business cleanup. The first is Robert's Rules of Order. Also move on that. Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Second is the Board of Trustees' meetings. Those would be the second and fourth Tuesday of each month during 2016 at 6:00 PM, except Monday, November 10th, which will be, yeah. It's an adjustment because of the elections. So I'll move on, beginning of year resolutions. Number four.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Number five is retaining employee. Also move. Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Let's see here. Beginning of year resolution number six, work rules and policies. Also move on that.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Takes us to number seven. Holidays to be recognized by the Board of Trustees for the 2014 calendar year. So move on that.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Beginning of year resolution number eight, mutual aid. This just says we'll extend mutual aid to any other fire department or EMS service, and the fire chief shall authorize orders for the deployment of this aid. Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Number nine, Stark County Joint Fire Investigation Unit. Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Number 10 is workers' compensation resolution. Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Beginning of year resolution number 11, insurance benefits. To continue all insurance benefits to all elected officials and full-time employees until the first meeting in 2015, if such plans are amended, altered, changed, or switched by the Board of Trustees. Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Beginning of year resolution number 12, Stark Council Governments. We've got two appointments here. Be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to appoint blank as representative to the Stark Council Governments and to appoint blank as an alternate representative for 2014.
I'm moving following, be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to appoint Mr. Geovasis as representative to Stark County Council Government, Scott Hawes as, appointing as alternate representative for 2014, since out downtown. And, for a second.
I'll second that.
Eric.
Discussion.
I'm sorry. Eric, when is this contract run through? Am I correct, does this run through 2017?
17, I believe. When we looked at it and we were.
With the fee strike?
Going through that, it went through 17.
All right, let's make a side note on that we look at this contract again.
Yeah.
Because, just for the record, I mean, Stark County Council Governments has been a, I guess, an asset for the entire county over the years. But, I mean, I think what we looked at in the past, based on the timeframe and turnaround with the Stark County Crime Lab and the amount of time it takes back to get back things back versus using the state BCI, which is free, and the fact that we contract with the Stark County Sheriff, and the sheriff is already a member of SCOG and paying for that membership, I think the board should.
Duplicate costs.
Seriously look at eliminating that duplicate cost. Because I don't think Plain Township is being the second or third largest community in Stark County with the executive body. I don't think this board or this community has an adequate voice on that board for money that we're spending and what we're getting in return. I want the record to be clear upon that, because we're not getting anything, but we have no voice on that committee.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. It's gonna take us to the beginning of year resolution number 13, request advanced taxes. Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Beginning of year resolution number 14, strong hazardous response.
Also move.
Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. Beginning of year resolution number 15, zoning assistance overtime. Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Hov. Yes. That'll take us to number 16, paying cost of refreshments.
Also move.
Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis, yes.[482.16][482.16][S02. Mr. Hov. Yes. Number 17, waiving zoning fees for governmental agencies and political subdivisions. So move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes.[499.04][499.04][S02. Mr. Geovasis, yes.[500.24][500.24][S02. Mr. Hov. Yes. We'll wrap up with number 18, gov deals unwanted assets.
Also move.
Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes.[519.04][519.04][S02. Mr. Geovasis, yes.[520.48][520.48][S02. Mr. Hov. Yes. That'll conclude the beginning of the year resolutions. Sheriff's report, we have nothing. Do we have anybody in the crowd that has anything for the sheriff? Okay, close it out. The detectives' report, that's, turn it over Detective Cudick.
Thank you, everybody, everyone. Numbers four, December are as follows. We had 772 calls for service, 86 crash reports, and 21 crash reports with injuries, respectively, for each of those. It was a 16% increase in crashes and a 38% increase on crashes with injury, with December and the snow and the weather. I know on Saturday, that's all they went, was from call to call on crashes. 111 alarms, 94 traffic stops, and 104 citations. Obviously, the number of citations is higher than the number of traffic stops because of the citations issued from the crashes. There were 27 arrests with 20 bookings and seven subs. So it was all about crashes.
Crashes, lots of crashes. As I say, there's still quite a bit of black ice out there.
It's a little slick.
You didn't know like Sunday was really.
We'll do it. Let her report for the sun.
Thank you, Detective.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work, man.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll close up the detectives' report. Nothing under unfinished business or new business. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Flex, our fiscal officer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal Officer number one's gonna be a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in the amount of, and that number's gonna change to $178,724.41, as attached here to the partisan minutes.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Just briefly, if I could, the reason for the change is that one of those warrants was removed for Hillshire Clark, so that's the difference in the changes.
Yeah, that was the last one, right? The Schneider Roger.
Yeah, warrant 26314. Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Leen.
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the regular payroll amount to exceed $220,000.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Leen.
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the following medical claims as provided by all parent express scripts.
Also move on fiscal officer number three.
Second.
Discussion, just as a point of clarification, I had the email on the prescription component. Did everybody see that it was originally gonna just have that expired? And I thought that was ridiculous.
Yeah, the 90-day.
Yeah, so that's gonna end April, April 1st, and that communication should be going out as well. If anybody would have an old.
Get rid of it.
Old card, get rid of it, because it will not be accepted.
And the pharmacies should be notified. I mean, if somebody gives that to a pharmacy and they accept it, is that our responsibility here?
What's up?
If one of our employees walks into a pharmacy with one of the old cards under the old plan, because we had to expend that out for 90 days because of the penalty, because of the contract, and that pharmacy accepts that insurance card because they have it on record without verifying its validity and it's paid, are we still responsible for those?
Essentially, where, Hiding Tenor Broker has submitted the 90-day cancellation. They have stated that April 1st is, you know, everything's supposed to be terminated. So I think what Lou's saying is, I walk in, or any of us walks in April 2nd and says, hey, need a prescription, and they present the, you know, one of the old cards that should, or numbers should be disposing of.
I think everyone'd be shocked if that card worked.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's probably a likely scenario. When you're talking about having to pay money people, we usually pay pretty good attention to that part of it. They'll get canceled, I would imagine, the days they're supposed to be. But if that did happen, it would be my argument that we would go back to either the previous provider or the pharmacy itself. In reference to you, that'd be my argument. To tell you how that's gonna turn out, I don't know for sure.
Well, I bet the pharmacy takes it out of the computer, because a lot of times.
Right.
Comes up on the computer.
That's right.
And they submit it at a later date, and it comes back, and then their contact and us saying, hey, we owe.
I think we, I think, you know, we could have had a lot of this off with some education to our people. Just.
I was under the impression through Lou through that majority of it was for the mail-in.
That makes sense.
Express scripts, 90-day mail-in.
It caught my, it caught my nail.
So, local pharmacies, I don't have to, that was a big problem. I think it was all the mail-in, they just continued, still go through that for the mail-in.
And the thing is liability, technically.
Right.
We've got documented notice that they had submitted it, so that should be on the insuring.
Insuring, yeah, the broker, I imagine.
That's my argument.
So that'll be, so, roll call.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis, yes. Mr. Leen, yes. Officer number four is the financial report.
We're good? We're going.
Joe, the motor vehicle license tax and the gasoline tax, is that pretty much on the part?
Yeah. Sometimes we don't get all, we won't get all our money till, like, December. We got, I got check in on both of those. It comes periodically throughout the year, but it's usually, my right, Mr. Flex, we get the last check in December.
Correct, December's will be in January, but.
So much for the rear.
Yeah, John looks at a really good job on making sure that we get as much as we can by the end of December to your purpose.
I think what we should do periodically, though, I know we've done it, we passed an age of the letter and on the website, I think we need to further educate our residents. When they go in to buy their license plates, they put down Canton as their address and don't specify Plain Township. City of Canton gets that fee.
Exactly.
For those license plates, and it's the same if they go to a gas station across the street from Plain Township, instead of the one in Plain. That money also goes to the city, you know, to the gasoline supply. So, it's one way that the residents can know about defer some costs and possible increases and.
Part of the problem's probably with Parkham also, because their mailing address is, they probably don't even ask the question, you know, where do you live, when they go get their plates.
Well, at the DMV, that's one of the questions they have to ask, you know, where do you live? The resident needs to specifically state, I live in Plain Township, I live in Jackson Township, I live in Perry, whatever, you know, subdivision they live in. If they just arbitrarily say North Canton Mass or Canton, that subdivision's gonna give credit for that fee.
Actually, you think with any license, you should be able to cross your arse against the address. If this is your address.
No, they go to track under that.
On, it'd be nice, you walk in and say, hey, I'm at 2600 East. I'm not sure if that's North Canton or Plain Township, but.
They don't ask do you live in the city or township. You specifically gotta tell them where you live, because they'll say, where do you live? And you say Canton, that's what they punch in there, and those fees go to the city of Canton.
We get that one on our webpage.
I've got both of those. I've got the gases and the motor vehicle under fiscal office, but it's something that we can just take those and write in the newsletter as well.
Yeah. And so I.
Fiscal Officer number five, then, would be a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize a refund as follows for over payments.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Leen.
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number six, would be a request for a resolution to authorize the following transfers.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Leen.
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number seven is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to approve the 6-day bonuses as in the negotiated contract with members of the Plain Township Firefighters Association as follows.
Also move.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
And Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number eight, it's a request for a resolution by the board to release, retain its funds to Bodnar Construction.
Also move on fiscal officer number eight.
Second.
Discussion. Chief, from a work on the news station, is everything pretty well wrapped up? Even any punch list items, or is there any little details under that need done that would impact us releasing this?
Well, they reduced it down, didn't take the whole retainage. There's some still left for Bodnar. And there was a few punch list things left. Matter of fact, they were working today on some, a couple things, the weather was a little better. That's why they didn't release all of it, they were down to that.
Just down to that 25,000.
Yeah, just a little bit of a security net, in case any other, you know, last-minute punch list stuff that wasn't finished.
So between Chief and yourself, you guys are comfortable?
Yeah, yeah. They've been, they've been working at it the last two weeks, electrician and stuff, and also roofers and a couple other people. Is there a discussion?
I mean, I imagine some things are gonna need to be revisited as to when the weather breaks too. And with that 25 grand, we're gonna hold on, would that cover that?
I think that was the plan, was to, you know, hold that until spring, more or less, to make sure that any routine outside things that weren't finished, you know.
Oh, they've done a good job, but there's gonna be some things that rest on the outside of the building.
Yeah.
You gotta keep some skin in the game with it.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Leen.
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number nine, it's a request to amend, a request to amend resolution 791 in regard to minimum wage. It stated federal instead of state, so that's the state minimum wage. That was passed at the last meeting.
Also move on fiscal officer number nine.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
That'll conclude the fiscal officer's report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. That'll take us to our administrator, and I'm gonna turn that over. Joe, Ian or Eric?
We stare at each other and.
Item number one is a resolution to approve the employees' assistance program for 2014, and authorize payment to concerned psych services.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leen, yes. Mr. Hov.
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
And item number two is a resolution to amend resolution 13198 to increase the amount from $13,500 to $17,040 to authorize payment to ME company for extended work for construction and changes to the restroom at Snyder Park.
I will settle with administrator two. Second, discussion.
Majority of that was dealing with ATP and Hillshire Clark trying to get the the cost down on redoing the electric that ATP wanted, and Rich spent a lot hours pushing that and getting it done. I do believe this past week, they finally got it and got it done, because I seen a major on the building.
Well, this was also separating out that previous one, Anthony, isn't that correct? Where it was all grouped together?
They never really separated anything out. This is just to increase it. I mean, the original one was $9,800, it got increased $4,000, and this is increasing it another $4,000, just for the total, total amount of the project.
We made a previous request to have that split out, haven't we? I thought it's been, it's been discussed.
Yeah, I've never seen that one.
All right.
I haven't seen it. I don't know if this had passed or not, so.
I'm gonna request this resolution be tabled till we get the result. Because of there, I mean, there's audit issues involved in that. And in fact, before we pay that out, I'd like to see the breakdown exactly what those costs are.
Specific to the project.
Can we just hold this over?
Thank you, Mr. Raisino. It's gonna take us to the fire department.
Item one is our monthly report for December.
Is everything running smoothly out of the news station? All things considered?
Yeah.
Since December 5/3?
Starting to get adjusted and, I think we're going good.
Just for clarity, all the stations in it, one, the papers is already noted. All the stations have been renumbered now with the central station and then so on. Good for you guys.
It's good. Number two is a yearly report for 2013.
Almost 4,500 calls for the year. Average response, 553. I think it needs to be noted, really, with, you know, four full-time stations and this call, this call volume as compared to some of the other political jurisdictions, township or city, you know, our guys are pretty darn efficient in taking up the call volume. Any other insight, Chuck, just into any of the annual numbers? And that just stand out?
No, I mean, we're doing pretty good with the responses. I mean, you know, obviously, there's all different kinds of seasons in here too, so that makes, you know, winter times, you know, slower because of the roads and conditions and stuff. So, but for a year's number, I think that's, that's pretty good considering the mileage we have to cover.
Plus, you also take into account all those 4,400 response calls we actually transport over almost 3100 feet though.
Okay.
Number three is healthcare reimbursement.
Also move on, fire, number three.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Leen.
Yes.
That'll take us to fire number four.
Number four is also a health club membership reimbursement for the collecting bargain agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Leen.
Yes.
Item number five is a change order, request for Abbott Electric for work at the new fire station.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Mr. Leen.
Yes.
That'll conclude fire. That'll take us to the public service department, turn it over to Mr. Raisino.
Chairman, item number one is the monthly report for December. It doesn't snow month, that are right here.
How, how the, how the trash, hold up as far as blades and all that, where are my stuff?
I got one truck later on a thing we have to buy a new subframe for to rust it off. It almost fell off.
Good.
Item number two is a resolution authorized purchase of gasoline, oil, diesel fuel amount exceed $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leen, yes.
Mr. Geovasis.
Yes.
Mr. Hov.
Yes.
Item number three is the 2013 annual road report, which will be submitted to Stark County Engineer Keith Bennett.
So we serve at 9.6 pounds, Joe?
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll be able to continue that this year. The only thing, it might not look as much as Snyder Road does the resurface, some matter. It's, I don't know, so, it's all, so.
All right, you know, Snaggy's.
Oh, it's, it's, we're passing constantly.
Well, the amount of traffic is a day, road is a day, is a days.
Part of the problem we're gonna have to look at, what we're gonna actually do with it, whether we're gonna.
Full depth.
Full depth or what. We do full depth, you know, a lot of our, paving on the streets, so we're gonna seriously have to look at. We didn't do it this year because of building a fire station. It actually probably went a year too long. So, whatever we can do in-house, we will before the day of coming. So whatever we can do in-house, we will before they come in repairs and stuff, so.
That's just to increase graphical, everything going on?
Yeah, with everything that's there.
School buses?
Item number four is the two thousand and thirteen annual township highway modus that we received from, uh, Star County Engineers. The board needs to sign it. Um, we lost a little bit of roadway this year, uh, due to the annexations from, uh, Hall of Fame annexations, basically, most of them. So we, it was less than, hopefully more than two tenths, but, uh, we'll be gaining that once, uh, Lexington Farms, New Brothers are probably turned over to us at some point in two thousand and fourteen.
Just like Lou typically points out, that's, that's just one direction of roadway, so bi- bi-directional, it's essentially three, just a hair under three hundred and fifty miles of roadway.
If you're climbing, you gotta do that by four, so.
Yeah.
Cause we take some passes. And number five is a resolution authorized purchase of carpet supplies from Home Depot not to exceed three thousand dollars. This would be for, uh, secretary's office and my office, the carpet's fifteen years old, we can no longer get cleaned, it's wore out. We were going to do it in-house with the carpet house, uh, similar with the fire department.
Are you gonna split that off tile and carpet like they suggested maybe?
I'm still looking at my office. Teresa's has already done that way. The guys are working on the locker room. I'm on the floor, uh, Mr. Lina was over there the other day, he got to sit.
If you were to get front part off, with tile, we'll probably wear better, cause most of your guys may come and they're standing right there in that middle area, so.
It's just more out, more we can do with it.
So, so move then. Move number five. Second? Discussion?
A quick question. The, the new building that we're taking over in these offices here, that carpet really bad. Will we get a better deal if we add, if we need to do that with this?
Well, you're putting it to the cheapest price.
You're putting the cart in front of the horse over there. We need to first take a time and have a special meeting where we can do a walk through this building and figure out who's going where, what structural changes, things have to be done. You don't wanna have to start tearing down walls when there's already new carpet. Do you wanna make sure that's done last?
We talked about a long way toward it, but that carpet is, we all.
Oh, well, you need to reclaim it, especially be done last.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, that's a good point, cause there might be some walls you're breaking down here. Okay, makes sense.
Item number six is just an update on.
Roll, roll call, roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Item number six is just an update on the use of station four. We start moving in, uh, vehicles, um, as well, about a week, week and a half. Um, there's road vehicles down here, there's parks vehicles down there. Starting to move in some tools, uh, for the winter. Some of those tools won't be there all year, they'll be coming back up to diamond. I just wanted to know if the board's okay with us continuing to move forward, start building some shelving and keep moving forward for space or something to start.
Based upon the plan, plan slash options you detailed out, I'm totally comfortable with, you know, the continued securing, securing the equipment.
Mr. Lina visited the space last week and he likes the, the way we're doing moving forward with it. He had some questions and we're gonna answer all those questions too, so we still got the question about the sheriff's department with, uh, their front office, what they're gonna do, so we're not gonna do anything in there right now.
Like, we can get under a roof?
This is the time for us to do it before Park starts getting busy with that grass and everything. So they're, they actually started working on some equipment in there today, doing clean and doing some stuff down there. Item number seven is the parks facility monthly report for December. As you know, the lights were being installed today. We dug it and played the conduits and pulled the wire and hopefully for the electricity, we got the, the sign, play it up.
Yeah. Well, we got quite a bit, quite a bit done.
Yeah.
Some big scale projects, you could look at it.
We really did.
We do. I think one project going forward, we may wanna look at, Joe, is the west parking lot at Diamond, um, park lighting. Driving back from the funeral, a lot of you, from, yeah, coming back from the funeral the other night, calling ours, little flower. A lot of people are utilizing that facility after dark and it's pitch black in that west parking lot. For safety reasons, for people using the facility and the recycle bins, but also.
Mr. Flex, is there any way to create a lighting district for that?
To create a, it'd be the same as any, any other lighting district, but.
It's just going, you're only paying for it.
The only difference is, typically with a lighting district, it's for the residents and you gotta have a community that's resident.
That's just a tax we'd be paying for this. I don't know what your cost, but I mean, it's something to look into, but you have to have that thing on all the time at night.
Two outside of the.
Well, we're leaving the lights on in the east parking lot all evening. Which when the facility is closed and then the other side is being utilized by residents after dark, it's pitch black. It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, we'll make some phone calls to see the cost and how many lights we'd actually need.
I think just right around the, uh, recycle bins, just it lights up that area. Number one is for the resident safety that's using it and number two, you can see who's there and what they're dumping in the middle of the night.
But we still want one on that back corner and the only reason I bring that up is cause if you drive by on occasion, you may, you may get, you may get little cars parking, parking back there and if it's lit, it's lit up, it's a little more of a tear.
It happens over there. It happens every now and then.
We'll look at that, yes, so. Item number eight is a, uh, year end report from the that will be accomplished with the parks, all three parks and equipment pot, um, this year. Moving forward on a lot of projects, a lot of things look great. It's a resolution authorized to purchase of an underbody subframe from Concord Equipment for truck ten.
Also move?
Second.
Discussion?
Just rust it out and, and. It, it ties in the scissor lift so it couldn't lift the bed up, just rust it out and almost fell off, so our guys already got the bed off. They're gonna do everything in-house, we just have to purchase the subframe itself.
So again, we're instead of just trying to replace stuff, we.
See, this is a truck that we put a new cab on last year, you know, it's got the stainless pad, so it's something that's gonna be kept around for a while.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. That'll close on public service, that'll take us to the zoning department, Mr. Paul.
Gentlemen, number one is the monthly report for December.
Any, just a question, this new, this new business, it's under your metro, do we know what that is?
There's a cell phone store.
Okay.
It's right on, uh, Route sixty-two, just, just a little east of Missouri.
Okay.
Okay, and zoning number two is, is a resolution, uh, regarding the Star County Governmental Law Seminar on Saturday, February eighth. It's going to be held at the exploration gateway to pay any members of the Department of Zoning Appeals or zoning commission or staff to attend.
Sub move?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. It's gonna take us to the parks programming, Mr. Steinberg.
Gentlemen, item number one is the, um, December monthly report.
Under your, under your indoor programming, are there some, are there some new?
A lot of partners, a lot. A lot of new partners, all those are new for this year. A lot of them are running during the day now too.
Any questions, anybody?
Gentlemen, item number two is a resolution, uh, be adhered by resolve by a clean time support of Prestise Star County, Ohio, to adopt the attached reservation and fee policy for reservation and events for parks programming moving forward for two thousand and fourteen and beyond.
Also move? I'll second it. Discussion for a point of clarification is that this will help us maximize, correct the usage of the facility instead of just blanket requests where we potentially have
it does.
Entities or entities
it does.
blocking it out, prohibiting us to offer to other parties.
What it does is allow us to, to utilize our facilities to maximize their, their usage and their potential, um, for revenue. It allows us to, uh, engage partners and clients, both current and future, in, in contracts. It allows us also to, um, be competitive with like-minded facilities, um, and programming pieces around the area, um, to again, continue to attract new business.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I had one question.
Sure.
Township resident versus non-resident.
Uh-huh.
How are we deciding that?
Address, I think, yeah.
Address of who?
The renter.
Okay.
The contractor.
How do you decide who the renter is?
You gotta be able to bump that right up. If you take a look at that address, bump that right up, but take an ID, address, bump it right against the auditor seat, it'll, it'll tell you.
Well, I guess I'm thinking of corporate people that are gonna come, this is just gonna happen.
No, no.
The corporate entity's coming in and the guy's gonna hand it to you and you're gonna say, okay, it's the non-resident rate, cause your corporate entity is organized in Lake Township.
I think.
He's gonna go, whoa, hey, big fella. I'm a township resident, I've been here thirty years.
But if it's the corporate entity.
But it depends on who's contracted. If it's the corporate entity that's contracted, they're non-resident. If it's the resident that's contracted, then it's the resident rate.
Okay.
I see what you're saying.
You heard what he said.
Yeah.
So when he shows up at that podium, that's our response.
That's not a problem, because liability resides neither with that entity or that entity.
I can hear you saying, well, I've been living here thirty years. So I agree with you.
Yeah.
To do it that way.
To me, to me, it's whoever's contracted is the liability, so if the liable entity is the corporate entity and it's not within township borders, then it's a non-resident rate. However, if it's with the specific resident, it's the resident.
Then it's the resident.
Yes.
That was my response, huh?
All right, good, we got that one out.
Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Parks programming, nothing under the law director. Communications, gonna turn that over to Mr. Asino.
Uh, we've got a thank you from the mail person in Snyder Heights and Pembroke area, thanking us for, for a nice letter. Item number two, it's us thanking Chicken Manor, uh, during one of the recent snowstorms, they sent a bunch of food down to the road guys.
They sent you?
Yeah. Free of cost.
Wow.
And item number three is a thank you letter to the fabulous road group. And we hit our mailbox.
What's, where was it said, Joe?
Just, just.
Uh, Forty Fifth Street off of, uh, Thirty ninth, back on that little school, back in there off of Federal.
Essentially for those in the crowd, mail, uh, earlier this snow season, our mailbox collided with one of your snowplows. To our pleasant surprise, you didn't just repair it, you completely replaced it even before the mail arrived that afternoon. You always go above and beyond the call of duty. Not only do we wanna thank you for replacing our mailbox, but tell you how much you're appreciated. Have a safe snow season. Thanks again. So. That wraps up communications. That does bring us to the portion of the meeting, public speaks. If there's anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the boards, come to the podium, state your name and your address and you've got three, three minutes. No one for public speaks? Do know we've got a voice count out, a crowd working on a citizenship, uh, work here, so, nice to, nice to have you. And what's your name for the record?
Uh, Jonathan Sams.
So Jonathan Sams, what, what troop are you with?
Uh, two thirty-four.
Nice to have you with us here this evening. Nothing else, some of the public speaks. Okay. That takes us, concerns of trustees and everything. Actually, I forgot to, to note something. The first, I had two folks mention something to me that over in the west at Diamond Parking Lot, somebody's parking a fifth wheel camper.
It's gone.
Over there, over there.
It, it was there for an afternoon.
Okay.
And it was gone, cause I was questioning the same thing.
Somebody got, you know, just smart aleck with me and like, can I sell stuff over there? Just put it in the lot? And I'm like, we'll investigate, we'll investigate, let me use right over by there.
Yeah, yeah, I saw it also and the day, I, I said, what, they, they dropped, they dropped it off late at night and then by mid-afternoon it was gone, cause I was gonna go over and run the plate and see who it belonged to, so. Be keeping that out for that. I don't know who it was, I don't know where the vehicle went, it was late at night. It was gone, so.
Thanks. Next one I had was just a reminder, Thursday is Star County Township Association meeting, down regional planning. I have no clue what the program, program is.
Is she the president again?
No, I'm not, I'm not even part of that. I grist with that deciding when other people develop and learn their skills. And then, um, the last, last one that I wanted to bring up because, um, I had somebody from Lake Township say this to me and I know, you know, Perry Township as well is contesting it with the health department and the fees that, that we, that we pay.
What are they doing, what are they saying they're doing?
Essentially, both Perry and Lake are challenging what is being paid because I guess their funding is, what's the inside knowledge? Well, when you take a look at what each of the communities knows to specifically stated, that we're actually paying over what that inside mileage is and they're contesting it, so I wanted us to take a look at that, cause again, no different than SCOG, you know, if we're paying above and dealing with what's required, one, why are we, two, what are we getting in return? If, what we're getting in return is a, is it a justifiable expense? So I think ironically, Mr. Paul's the law director for both of those entities, so.
He is. I think it must be giving a buzz.
Sure. It might not be a bad idea to ask the health department to send a representative into one of our next meetings and give us an explanation what those costs are too.
Okay.
From their standpoint. Cause that's a very good point. And Mr. Gevasis, you can. Well, first thing I had on here that I've forgotten, I apologize. I wanna commend the fire department this week, um, especially in light of, of the passing of former Chief Snyder, of the fabulous job that they did. Honoring Chief Snyder's memory and, um, the way they represented the community during, um, that entire, uh, service and procession, uh, to the cemetery. Uh, there's no question, um, that, uh, what Claire Snyder, Chief Claire Snyder met the plain township, the community as a whole and the fire department. And it was a fitting, um, display on behalf of the fire department. I was very proud, um, of everything that you guys did in his memory and it was a a very, should have very good laid on, on the department and the community. The next thing I had on there was the jet, four-way jet agreement there. I just wanted to get something on the record concerning, I know Scott here.
I just wanted to get something on the record concerning, I know Scott, you're where you've had conversations, I believe, with people from the city of North Canton. I think that's something we need to keep a close eye on, if this drags out too long. I did make mention to City of Canton person today that I'm concerned, this drags out too far. I think Plain Township ought to be looking at getting with Canton, Jackson Township, amending this agreement, making it a three-way. Both Jackson and Plain may have hotels currently being constructed. The hotel in Plain is highly contingent on this agreement because part of that agreement was allowing North Canton to extend the water to that hotel, part of that agreement, and if North Canton's not going to be a part of this agreement, Canton is going to pull back on that and they could cause a delay on the development of that hotel. So if this drags out too much farther over the next week or two, we need to proceed forward and find out what we can do to proceed without the city of North Canton.
Sure.
In this event, it would be a shame if the city of North Canton wouldn't fulfill the agreement that was put on place. I think North Canton Council, North Canton Council passed it, we all passed it, all three entities, meaning Jackson, Plain, the city of Canton, signed the agreement, now North Canton administration, not council, who's holding up that agreement.
Actually bringing in factors that were originally discussed and were ultimately determined to not be part of that agreement, so at the twelfth hour, I know I've got confidence in the council themselves, themselves over there, upon discussions.
But council needs to understand also, and so does the administration know, that we're not going to wait for them to decide whether they're going to follow through with the original commitment, we're going to move ahead without them, because there's some developments that are taking place that are contingent.
Sure.
On this agreement, if North Canton doesn't want to be part of those that are currently underway, then we need to move ahead, put the end, because they will be beyond me, like, why this isn't even happening at this point, but especially the fact that the individual that's raising the concern never attended one of the meetings it was invited to and did not attend the joint hearing between all four entities, now all of a sudden has all kinds of questions and concerns.
Right.
So.
Anything else?
Nope.
It's all Mr. Leno. Okay, concerns of the piss box, Mr. Flex. That, watching, takes to the approval of the minutes for December seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen, and I will so move. Second. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis? Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And there is a need for executive session, so be it hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn to executive session at six fifty-three PM from this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Revise Code one two one dot two two G for the purpose and consideration of one B, employment of a public employer official, one D, discipline of a public employer official, one F, compensation of a public employer official, three, a conference with the law director or other retained counsel concerning pending or imminent court action. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis? Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.